Okay, good evening, everyone. My name is Laura Schifrin and I'm chairman of the planning board, and I will call this meeting to order on November 27th, 2023 at 6:34 PM. I'd like a roll call vote, please, of the members.
Carol Hopst is present.
Andrew Shepherd, present.
Tony Lopez, present.
Hi, Tony, and Laura Schifrin, present. And we understand Robert is on his way. Would you all please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank all of our veterans and all of our first responders and to please bless all of our military around the world. As it was stated, the meeting is being recorded and will be uploaded to the Town of Townsend YouTube channel. 1.4 IS Chair do not have any additions or deletions this evening. Was there a request from any board member?
No.
Okay, seeing none. 1.5 Review and approve the meeting minutes of November 13th, 2023. They were in the portal and Beth also sent a highlighted copy a little bit ago to us with just some changes or updates to it. Does, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for November 13th, 2023.
Seconded.
Okay, Andrew seconded, and discussion.
Noted.
Okay, thank you. Hearing no discussion.
My only discussion, as noted in the meeting minutes, that I was only present for about half of it. So my vote to approve will be based on the time that I was present.
Thank you, thank you, Andrew. Yes, I noted, I noticed that in the minutes as well, that it showed when you left and when you came back, okay? Thank you for mentioning that. Roll call vote, please.
Carol Hopst is yes.
Andrew Shepherd, yes.
Tony Lopez.
And Laura Schifrin, yes. So thank you very much. We are now a little shy of our 6:45. If the applicant is here, is this something that we can address before the 6:45?
Yes, and a majority vote of the planning board is required, and you have three members, so you can ask as well.
Oh, okay. Um, hmm. Who was on the sidewalk?
Uh, Robert and Carol.
Okay, I'd like to wait for Robert then to come.
Okay.
Since he went on the sidewalk, it makes sense. I wasn't on the sidewalk, obviously, so, um, yeah. Definitely those who were there, I'd like to address. Hopefully, he's here at the 6:45.
Oh, okay, sorry to interrupt, Lori, but again, we have that iPhone 2 person in the waiting room. Do you want me to let that person in? Would that be the person you're referring to?
No.
Okay, thank you.
No, but let me check the attendance. So we have Jessica and Dana Roberts. Dana, can I ask you, is anybody else coming for your, are you expecting somebody else regarding your request, your appointment at 6:45?
No, I'm the only one.
Okay, all right. So if you don't mind, I would like to wait for Robert to come since he was on the sidewalk.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. So 3.1, Announcements and Communications 2024 Board Meeting Schedule. Beth, do you want to handle 3.1?
Yeah, Robert's here, yep.
Okay, as soon as you do that, we'll, you know, we'll handle that and then we'll go to the 6:45, okay?
Okay, then take a report.
Uh, 3.1.
Yeah.
Says.
Administrator, record.
And that's you, yes, yes, thank you. And I do have that printed as well, thank you.
Okay, and apologies, I did not get the proposed board name scheduled together, but I will, and I'll send that out tomorrow, and you guys can just review it. So for applications, 27 Skies Lane remains on the list. This is a request for certificate of completion for stormwater management permit, 2019-03. The discussion was continued to December 18th, planning board meeting.
Yep.
And we are, the board awaits further information on that. Campbell Farm Open Space Preservation Development. As you know, the application for extension of stormwater management permit has been filed, and the planning board conducted a site visit on Monday, the 20th. 108 West Meadow Road, again, that was mentioned last time. Land use is, oh, I'm sorry, 108 West Meadow Road is the application for scenic roads approval. That's on the summer 18th planning board docket. Interdepartmental approvals, 320 Townsend Hill Road approval for the building department for a solar installation. Also, the 2024 alcohol license renewal approvals were done for the board of selectmen in terms of site visits and compliance, project compliance. 66 Bayberry Hill, we're waiting for proof of recording for the permit and decision. As mentioned last time, a letter was sent to 98, the owner of 98 101 West Meadow Road, and we're waiting for information. And then nothing else of note, other than 94 Pittsburgh Road, we received their first stormwater management monthly inspection report, and everything looks good. For miscellaneous, again, the CPTC fall workshops are all listed, and they're $35 a class. Any board member wanting to take one, please just let me know. There is also the first Western Mass CPTC conference for planning and DVA members, and that's on Saturday, December 2nd. If anybody wants to attend, please let me know. MDTA communities update. The town, special town meeting presentation was given by Jonathan Boss. There was, at that time, a public survey was open. The survey's on the town website. I've emailed it to you all, and we're asking that you please to share it with the public and the town people, so we can gather input. Input is coming in, responses are coming in. This is selected by MOPC, and they'll be sent along to us in a bit, but they are, we are getting some responses already, so that's good.
Beth, if I may, I'll just want to just at that point, I did see the email today with the survey on it, and I actually went to it. It doesn't take long to do, and it's very easy to use. So I'm just putting it out there, anybody watching this meeting, that the link is really easy and it won't take that much time of somebody's time. Okay, hopefully, we get more participation in it. I encourage the whole board to, and anybody who's on now, to visit the site. It will not take long, I promise. And they can use whatever input they get, so that's great. Thank you, Beth, I just wanted to say that.
Thank you, yep. The MVP Action Grant, Allison Redd Administrator has been reviewing the MVP HMP plan table, which had priority actions, and she's extracted the high priority actions that have the MVP Action Grant as a funding source. So staff are looking through project areas and priority actions to select the two best options for Townsend. The plan is to submit what they call an expression of interest, and that's from, it's a form that you submit to the state in advance of filing a MVP Action Grant, and the state gives you feedback on whether or not your project idea is a good one or, you know, what you can, what you can do to make it more competitive in the, in the very early stages. So I put a, the document that we've been working on, I printed a copy there, I've also put a copy in your folders, and the picks so far are highlighted in that document, and I just wanted to ask if board members might, you know, give some feedback and share some thoughts on what we, what we're picking, you know, what's going on in town, what's some of your priorities, you know, what you see for priorities for Townsend. And again, the same, the same Townsend Fair Free Mart Service announcement. Please write this all last. That's all I have, thank you.
Do you have any numbers yet on the usage?
No, I will make a point of getting them, though.
And so on, on D, you'd really like some feedback from the board in reference to the MVP Action Grant.
Exactly. Yeah, thank you, that would be great.
All right, guys, so maybe before our next meeting, you guys can look at that, or we all can look at that?
Sure.
Okay, so now we're at, my goodness, 6:45. Look at that, thank you, Beth, for filling that in. Okay, so 2.1, 6:45 Townsend Hill Realty Trust, Campbell Farm, OSTD, application for extension of stormwater management permit, 187 and 199 North End Road. How would you like to start this, Beth? Is there a report from the site visit, or shall we start with the applicant?
I want to start with the applicant, since he's already, he'll bring you up to date on, on everything he's submitted.
Okay, all right, Dana?
Sure.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. So we're just looking to get an extension to our stormwater permit. We have the last two houses under construction right now. They're both planned to be completed sometime late in the winter. And then we still have one other piece of the OSTD that we have to conform with, which is to put in the, the TARP skirt at the main road, which we don't really think we'll be able to complete until April, once we get into the winter. So we have been regularly maintaining the system. Obviously, everybody knows this has been a really difficult year because of the rain, but we've regularly been maintaining the system. I've been trying to keep all of our reports up to date on what we've been doing. The system is operating the way it's supposed to be operating. We have been continuing to really maintain the road as best as we possibly can while construction vehicles are entering the, entering the property. But we do plan on putting a TARP hut on it at the end and then completing it in April.
Okay, I see that Jessica was on. Jessica, did you have any comments?
Oh, there it is, sorry, hi. No, no, my camera thing was, was turned off. No, no comments, everything looks really good out there, and we appreciate the diligence with which you've been submitting all the monthly reports and, I would, I was out there today, so sorry if you saw me walking around by myself. But I, I would, just because of the winter and how sediment does track, just recommend cleaning up that gravel construction entrance there at the beginning. There's about half of it is sort of washed over with sediment, so it's not quite doing its job anymore. So just get that cleaned up in preparation of any final vehicles going through there.
Okay.
Okay, um, thank you, Jessica. Now, from the board members that were at the sidewalk, any comments?
Yeah, I, I went there and I was pretty impressed with the work that was done, particularly knowing the kind of weather we've had. He's done a very diligent job maintaining things that were little signs of erosion here and there, but he was right on top of it. So as far as I'm concerned, he's above average in his performance.
High praise.
Carol, anything?
No, I don't have any other comments.
Than that, okay, well, Dana, I would say that you've gotten some of the best comments I've heard in months. Having said that, and hearing from the board and conservation agent, I'll entertain a motion to approve an extension through whatever date you want to make in the springtime.
Generally, two years, does that work?
Two, well, okay, so now I'm confused. The extension is for two years?
Yes, yeah, that's the standard, that's the standard extension. But he can, he can request a certificate of completion as soon as he's done construction.
Okay, well, all right. I guess I misunderstood that, but it's okay with me. I'll entertain a motion from the board.
Sure.
Dana, did you want to say something?
No, no, I just, I just wanted to say, I was just gonna say that, I understand that I was probably a little confused with the way I said that, that's all, sorry.
And it's very easy to confuse me, obviously. I'll entertain a motion from the board then to, for the approval to extend.
I have a motion if you want to read it.
Would you give it to one of the board members?
Yeah. I basically, to vote and to give the motion to your extension certificate. Okay, so, that will work.
So just, oh, the motion is to grant. I'll make a motion to grant a two-year extension of stormwater management permit. Is this the exact, is this the permit numbers?
Yeah, those are the two.
Okay, permit number SM2019-03 and SM2022-01 to Townsend Hill Realty Trust for the definitive subdivision plan entitled Campbell Farms Open Space Preservation Development, North End Road. Second?
Second?
Okay, is there discussion?
I just assumed that they still have to file the monthly reports, or?
At the end of construction, and at the end of construction, I'll submit, I'll submit a request for certificate of completion. And I have, I have a special permit here for you to sign.
Okay, so when, when they do this, should they decide to ask, to ask for the completion certificate? After then, the reports become quarterly or yearly? Once it's completed and they've gotten the completion certificate, the schedule of reports changes, and my question is, to what?
Do you have that, in the bio?
I don't have the bio up in front of me, but once the certificate of completion is issued, then I believe it is two reports per year for one year, and then after that, it is the submittal of annual reports.
Okay.
And we have, similar to that, the SM8 form that the monthly inspections are on, we, we have a checklist for the annual and biannual.
Okay, okay, all right. I think we're going over some of that tonight in work session, actually. So, okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote.
Carol Hopst is yes.
Robert Theryn, yes.
Andrew Shepherd, yes.
Tony Lopez, yes.
And Laura Schifrin, yes. Okay, thank you, everyone, and thank you, Dana.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Okay, so next we have.
What signatures, yeah, I'm sorry, we will leave what signatures on the permit. I think it would be fine if you e-signed it, Lori, but, so.
I can sign it on Wednesday.
Okay, thank you.
You can sign it on Wednesday.
I'm gonna hop off, so everyone have a good night.
Okay, thanks. All right, so 3.1 is continued until our next meeting, and Beth will have that to us. In the meantime, Beth, when you send that out, this way we can all look at the schedule and see if something may have to be changed, correct? Okay.
Yeah, before I, you know, schedule the, the Zoom links and the room and all that, I'll let you all look it over.
Okay, all right, very good. And so 3.2 is what we've already done. That was Beth's report. 3.3 Discussion of Modifications of Chapter 106 Scenic Roads and Section 145-86 Large-Scale Ground-Mounted Solar Installations. Hopefully, everybody's reviewed, I don't know. Are you able to share what I shared?
Yes, I am. And can I just ask, if Andrew would please read the notices while I?
Yep.
Oh, sure, okay.
Can I have a screen sharing capability, please?
All right.
Andrew, so you are?
I'm, who's got the agenda?
Yeah.
I would be. Yeah, I guess, I don't know, I don't know what item I am, but I've got them in front of me.
I know. We'll just make sure it gets inserted. It's not on here, but you can still give them, please.
Yep.
What do you assume is not on the agenda?
Unless it's under communications.
Yeah, I'm just, I just put it under communication.
So 3.1, 3.1.
All right, fine, so 3.1. So the only thing that, okay, all right.
Town of Lunenburg Planning Board, application for approval with conditions for development of three two-family residential lots between Prospect Street, Kimball Street, and Pond Street. The owner is Apple Tree Realty and Trust out of Hubbardston, Mass. The planning board held a public hearing on October 2nd and October 23rd. At the October 23rd meeting, the planning board voted to grant the stormwater permit. That was the Town of Lunenburg, this is the Town of Groton. This is for 142 Main Street and Groton Ward Holdings LLC. The proposed use, this is a major site plan review permit, proposed use is a beauty salon/spa. Deed was recorded, decision of the board is on file, which they voted to grant the major site plan review permit.
And that was a Groton?
Groton, yep. Another one from Lunenburg.
You have an address on that one?
Yep. 142 Main Street in Groton.
Thank you.
Yep. And then the applicant is Michael McAndrew, 5 Tucker Avenue, Pepperell. The next one's Town of Lunenburg. This is a public hearing notice for December 11th at 6:05 PM at the town hall to hear and review a scenic road application under Chapter 40, Section 15C for 360 Flat Hill Road. The owner, Peter and Lisa Patno. That is about that. And the last one is the Townsend Historic District Commission Certificate of Appropriateness. For the property address is the Harbor Church, 80 Main Street. The description, the Harbor Church is being rehabilitated to serve as the Townsend Historical Society's welcome center and as a rentable function hall. We feel this is the best way to ensure the building will be preserved and maintained long into the future. While being respectful of the building's history, the Historical Society has determined that to be successful, this reuse will require some external modifications as described in the application. Exterior drawings have been submitted with the application, and a complete construction drawing is available to Townsend Building Department.
So there was, wasn't there a public hearing already by them? Or was it, I know there's a society and a commission and?
I knew, yeah, there was.
What's the date on that?
October 12th.
Oh, that was.
Oh, received October 12th by the town clerk and received by the planning board November 22nd.
When was it held, though? When's the hearing date?
This is not a notice, this is just a certificate, application for certificate of appropriateness. So I remember the public hearing was, or the public something.
Yeah.
It was a few weeks ago, I thought.
Yeah.
I think so, I think the public hearing was a few weeks ago. I went to the, I went to the hearing as a member of the Historical Society when they did it way back.
Oh, yeah.
I think when your father presented, whatever.
Yeah, 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 sure.
If that's part of, if that's part of Townsend, oh, and it's just, Beth, what does that mean?
Well, similar to when the planning board reviews an application, they issue a decision, and this is a basis of the Historic District Commission's determination on an application that they reviewed. So it's a notice of decision, similar to what you read from other towns.
Oh, okay. Okay, and just like, just like a zoning board decision?
No, it's, it's more, it's for appropriateness of any changes to an existing historic building. And so the Historic Commission reviews what the modifications will be and determines, it's pretty much about architectural features and how the change would impact the entire facade of a building.
Right.
So it's pretty much, you know, materials, colors being used. And so they review that to see if it's going to, in other words, so you take a historic building, you don't do a contemporary addition on it. So that they look at that and say, well, these windows should match the other ones or things like that, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank, thank you for Robert, for that clarification. Okay, were you, were you done? Andrew or Dana? Okay, thank you. Okay, so let's now go to 3.3, which is the Chapter 106 as part of our work session. And, okay, so what is being shared and what I tried to get out to most of you is my, you know, I mean, I've been on this board now longer than anybody else here, which is not saying a lot. But as I was going through this, I don't remember some of this, and I, I have questions myself, and I thought that me putting this up here would spur on some discussion or get answers for me. You know, maybe you guys already know what all of this means, and I'm just a novice. But I'm looking at it as a novice because most people who move to town never pay attention to the scenic roads thing and think that once they own a property, they can do whatever they want. That isn't always the case, as we know. We have people that do file complaints. So if it's okay with you guys, I will try to facilitate this for input from all of you. Would that work?
Yes.
Okay. So one of the first things that caught my eye was under the 106.2 designation, the word "all." Well, I underlined the date because I found that interesting. It was before I moved to town. And we've heard more about scenic roads at the planning board referencing walls, like stone walls. That seems to be the most that I've heard, anyway, in, in my tenure on planning. So to designate all roads of the Town of Townsend other than numbered routes or state highways as scenic roads. So I'm, I guess what I want to say is I don't think that this is being enforced. Like, it appears that, because we have roads that certainly are backroads that are not scenic at all. They, they're, they look like junkyards. So why is it that we are so concerned over stone walls and how an owner treats their stone wall? Yet we allow clearly, and, and that don't look bad, but we clearly allow properties that look like junkyards.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, you may.
There is no blight bylaw in town. Maybe that's something you want to think about for the bylaw review committee. A by, a blight bylaw. I don't know if that's even, you know, something you've considered.
No, because I'm not, I'm not hearing the word you're using.
Um, isn't like the word I'm looking at, like a, because of blight, B-L-I-G-H-T?
Right.
Like something that's disgusting looking?
Yes.
Well, it's, uh.
I guess.
Alright, so a couple of, um, so some of the things that come into this category, a lot of towns have implemented a bylaw that, um, tries to correct and, uh, eliminate any further eyesores, scenic eyesores along the road.
Okay.
So they incorporate things like, uh, tree buffer lines. Um, so for example, there are properties that you can see throughout the town where the landowners have treated their yards like their own private disposal site. And it's particularly obvious when the leaves are gone. Um, and, um, so, um, I think it would be prudent for us to review other communities' bylaws to see how they are written. Um, because it involves owners' rights as well. Um, but it also involves the community at large and how desirable the neighborhood looks. So it does impact real estate values and a lot of other things. Um, the other thing on this too, I question Laura, why roots, numbered roots and state highways are exempt? I don't think they should be.
But I don't think we have control. I don't think, I think the reason is because we don't have control. I, I don't, I don't know, I'm not a lawyer, so.
No, I haven't witnessed that. In other communities, they do have an input into it. Um, so for example, uh, I think it was Lexington or Harb- or Concord. The state wanted to put in, um, highway barriers that were, um, aluminum shiny looking and, um, they, the towns were able to enforce a more natural look or influence the color of things. Um, so I don't think, uh, I think the town does have a say into what could be done. And I don't think that they're, the towns are exempt. The state's responsibility is public safety and transportation. Um, um, and guardrails obviously are a safety element of a highway. Um, but it doesn't necessarily mean that they have to be painted orange or anything like that. So, um, I think there is some avenue that we can do something with that. Um, so I personally, and when it comes to our town, um, we have Route 119 and Route 13, which are major thoroughfares. And they, the things that disturb me the most is the destruction of the tree lines along those roads. I mean, a certain amount of it that's required to protect utilities and things and to protect road hazards. Um, but I was really upset, I mean, three or four years ago, when that whole area where the bike trail was, they just demolished all those trees. And then on South Road, is it, um, they did the same thing there. And it really made an impact.
Oh, that's Fisheries and Wildlife that did that?
Well, um, I mean.
The utility company did that.
Construction that's going on there, we've asked Fisheries and Wildlife if we could clean it up and, you know, stump it, and they refused.
So I, I think we, we need to have a say in some of this stuff. I, um, uh, you know, and when you think of Townsend, I, I, I was part of the Oak Kings Highway Historic Commission down on Cape Cod. And, um, a lot of things, um, a lot of things that are, people aren't, um, aware of that happen and that have major impacts. So along that Oak Kings Highway, which is the oldest historic district in the country, uh, developers were, uh, very anxious about begoing before zoning committees, uh, architectural and historic committees. So what they would do is they would use the same house plan that was approved before over and over, which actually destroyed everything that was historic. Yeah. And so another thing that is not observed, part of the character of the Oak Kings Highway was the sense of arrival from one village to another. So you go to Comacquid and then all villages were close together. All the houses were clustered together. Then you drive through the woods and you were sets of arrival in another village. Um, and that was destroyed by removing trees. So, uh, part of the character of that highway was not the buildings on it so much. I mean, the buildings are a major contributor, but the trees and having windy roads and having tree-lined roads and, and with overhanging branches was part of the ambience of making that scenic route. And so here, um, I see a total neglect about what's happening with the trees on our highways. Um, and so I'd like to preserve that with some kind of language. Um, and again, we don't have any influence and I certainly wouldn't jeopardize public safety on any level, but, um, we have a sense of arrival in our town too, with Townsend Harbor and Townsend Center and West Townsend and, um, so there's little specific areas of town that, um, may not mean a lot to newcomers, but certainly mean a lot to the history of the town and people that have grown up here. So, um, anyway, that's my comments. I'm sorry if my dialogue is too loud, but.
Okay. Beth, um, getting back to the purpose and authority part where, um, not, excuse me, the designation part, where it does say, "other than numbered routes or state highways", um, is that a question? One of, so I'm sure there's going to be many questions, but is, that should be one of the questions. Um, how can that be worded so that we do have input or, uh, permission needs to be asked of the planning board under this chapter?
Yeah, this is a general bylaw. So, um, you know, the process is the same. If, when, you know, the board would like to propose an amendment, it's the same process as a zoning bylaw, but it just requires a majority vote at town meeting, not a two-thirds vote.
Okay.
So it's quite possible you could just change the wording and, and put it up to town meeting.
Okay, so can you just make a note under that one right there that would be that in our, in our list of things in reference to this one chapter?
Could I suggest that we just delete "other than numbered routes and highways"?
And just leave it all woods.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, if that's, yeah, sure. If that's allowable, yeah. That might.
I'm sure they do let us know if it's not.
Yeah. Okay, very good. Okay, so Beth, you have that note to eliminate the "other than numbered", okay, very good.
Yeah.
Thank, thank you. Uh, okay, going on to the application now. Um, within the right-of-way of designated roads. What does that mean?
I don't know.
Um, within the right-of-way designated road.
Well, isn't the right-of-way 20 feet from the center of the road out?
Yeah, I would assume that's to the, the property line, not the public way.
That's established by that highway department.
Right, I don't think we can change that.
Yeah.
Okay, so within the right-of-way of designated roads, the following activities require the filing of an application with the planning board and written approval of the planning board after a public hearing duly advised. So you're saying that if this is, this is here, if somebody wants to do something in the road? Or within, you said 20 feet of the road?
Oh, isn't the right, isn't the right-of-way, however that's written, from the 20, the middle of the road, 20 feet?
So, in other words, the right-of-way.
Oh, so 10 and 10, okay.
Right.
Okay, 10 and 10. I get it.
To the, uh, we would only have to impact on property owners, not on public ways. Alright?
Right.
So if you look at all your utilities, they're all on public ways. They're not on private property.
Well, no. Because all poles, all the poles, okay, so the, the roadways are 20 feet wide. Right? And the middle is 10. So when you go 10 feet, now this is going to be my, my thinking, could be totally wrong. But the road's 20 feet wide, the middle is 10. Then you go 10, 20 feet from the middle onto your property. There's 10 feet that you actually own, but utility pole, utility poles are, are all over them. That's where the utility poles are. So, so, okay, if you want to do some, Beth, you're going to have to find out what this means, because like I'm saying, here we are, planning.
Yeah. It's determined by the building department and the highway superintendent. It's a, it's a standard measurement. Not all roads are the same. Um, so that's something that's predetermined. So what that, we do have a scenic roads application before you, um, coming up on the 18th. That was because of a driveway permit, driveway entrance permit. And somebody needed to move a stone wall to create a driveway. And that stone wall was in the public way, uh, as determined by the highway superintendent. So that is, it's all, it's all laid out. Um, I don't have the numbers, but each road is, is determined.
So then they, whoever wants to do this, it doesn't come before planning?
It does if you're going to alter a stone wall or remove a tree that is determined to be in the public way by the highway superintendent. And he's the one that makes that, yeah.
Okay, so I'm, I'm telling you that the stone wall, along with the utility poles, are within that 10-foot buffer. Because if they were 10 feet off the road, that would be the 20 feet. And that's why they have to ask for permission. Now, the problem comes in like this, this is 1974. There are stone walls in town that have been here longer than 1974. And they are within that 20-foot or what was determined by the highway department before. And that's the, that's the truth for most of the stone walls. You'll find mostly every stone wall in Townsend is built before 1974. So I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying this as a point of argument. I'm trying to be able to explain it and understand why the people would have to come before us.
Um, well, first of all, the 1974 date was when the town meeting approved it.
Yeah.
So it has nothing to do with the age of a wall.
No, this wasn't in effect.
I'm sorry?
The bylaw, this, the purpose of this bylaw, um, town voted at the annual meeting. Okay, this is, this, there wasn't a scenic bylaw before 1974.
Correct.
So what I'm saying is it, it comes after like the stone walls that were here and some of the utility poles that were here pre-existed before this bylaw.
Yeah. I don't understand.
Would the argument you're making, Laurie, be that if they were here before 1974, their grandfather, I don't know, away from?
Yeah, well, yeah, see, I'm having a problem with the, this being retroactive.
I think the same thing would apply with a historic building. Before they were historic, they were built. So, uh, and now we're protecting them. So this would be under the same
Okay.
concept.
Okay.
I guess I'm, I'm not a lawyer either, but I would imagine like Robert, like it's a historic building, it's an historic wall, personally.
But not every historic building is protected by the historical.
Society.
No. Yeah, like the church is not a historic building. That's why they could alter
Sure.
the facade of it.
Sure, sure.
Even though it's an old church.
Sure.
Well, I.
We're saying any stone wall in the public way.
Has to be.
I, I don't have a problem with any of it as it's written, other than the numbered roots. And, and the right-of-way, um, it is predefined already.
Yeah.
Um, so I, I would think any major um, modification um, to a stone wall would certainly would be under, should be under town review. Um, and the same thing, uh, I think the same thing would, would apply to any element, whether it's trees or whatever that may have been there. Um, it, is it a positive or negative impact? What a planning board should look at is, is it a good thing or a bad thing? Um, and so this brings in exactly what we talked about previously, about impact of, of, um, of, uh, debris and rubbish and things on people's property. Um, so your plight designation, um, is going to be a big part of what I think the scenic road would be, or at least be another separate bylaw. Um, because if all roads are scenic, then I would think any blighted thing from the, that's visible. that's visible from the roadway, uh, could have an impact on people.
Yes.
Yes, yes, we have, we have, he's actually cleaned up his yard, but there was one house that looked like, it was on the corner of our street and that, he had the other road, it was a complete junkyard. And I don't know if somebody's taught to him, but all of a sudden it's been like cleaned up, but my other petty.
That's really nice.
Fix is, is the islands in Timberly Park, this, some of the islands in Timberly Park have now become parking lots. It's a pet peeve of mine, it's like, when I go walking and I, to the point where they've actually put stone dust in the islands to park their cars.
Really?
Oh, yeah, it's like, I'm glad I don't work in that circle.
But that's a public way, isn't it? Wouldn't that?
Yeah.
But they park, they've got, there's two or three circles where they, you've got all kinds of cars parked on the.
Well, this is a classic example of a scenic road situation, right?
Well, I mean, I don't know how you're, if I was in, if I lived there, I'd be the bitch on the street that would complain about getting cars on my pilot, but I don't live there, I just walk there.
And normally that would require a complaint to be filed, and then it would be acted upon, so obviously there, nobody was looking or complaining in those cul-de-sacs.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Well, the problem is, there's no bylaw addressing it, so there's no enforcement, there's no, um, there's no way for a property owner. I mean, this happens so frequently, the building department will get a complaint from a call, but there's nothing in the bylaw that the town can do to, uh, address the complaint.
Maybe not the bylaw in the town, but when Timberly Park was developed and the cul-de-sacs were put into place, when the islands were put in, there was probably something written at that time. And through the years, now, now we're looking.
Those islands don't.
Fifty years later.
Property, I mean, I don't know.
I don't know, again, it would have to be looked at as far as the development itself, than what was approved and not approved.
Well, one of the things that I'm experiencing when I talk to Janet in the building department is complaints similar to this. Um, and her, her only resource through the building department in terms of enforcement comes from the zoning bylaw. Um, otherwise she's handicapped to what to, to, to say. Now, we can argue that when that subdivision was put in and, and whatever the intent was, not to have parking on there. Um, but there's nothing in the bylaw that gives, makes it specific enough for anybody to act on it, you know?
Yeah.
For the town to act on it anyway.
That's right, I'm, yeah.
If the neighbors wanted to, if the people in the cul-de-sac wanted to come back to the development and they had an issue, it would become a legal thing versus a town thing.
Right.
But at any rate, okay, um.
Yeah.
So in that one oh six dash three, now with the discussion, I understand what the right of way in the desig- of designated roads is. And then also the A B C is what gets enforced or what has to be looked at. So you're looking at the tearing down, painting or destruction of stone walls, which is why we have heard things about stone walls at planning. The cutting and or removal of trees, and I have a question mark next to that, except I, I guess it's just been answered that, again, it's just within that right of way and not on my own property. Okay, just within that right of way.
If I have to suggest something on that, I encountered this in the town of Bolton, and they have a scenic roads bylaw. And I know from my client's experience, it was a very challenging one. I mean, it was very aggressive in terms of, um, not disturbing the, the scenic road at all, I mean, as far as trees, very specific. So I would probably wanna reference the Bolton bylaw and see how, how that.
I don't wanna be too specific on, I walk a lot through Timberly Park, it's, the section's heavily wooded. And I look up and, you know, they're right there on the street, which I don't, I love trees, but some of these trees, if they come down, they're gonna kill somebody. And some of these trees don't look that healthy. And I, I wanna be able to take, who monitors all these trees? But, you know, they're not gonna come, I mean, I drive all over town, and if you look up in the, in the wind.
That's easy to address, as far as any trees go, any diseased or decaying trees would be exempt, you know, um, I mean, that's, uh, um, I think the intent of the bylaw here is to, to try to preserve the road as much as possible.
No, I mean, the good trees, I wanna keep those.
But, but.
A lot of pine trees out there, which are.
Which are the ones that's giving me the most.
The wind blows too much, they can.
Right.
For those of you who are new members, um, the tree warden is part of the public hearing, he actually attends the public hearing jointly with the planning board, the tree warden.
Oh, okay.
If a tree is involved in a scenic roads application, he'll be here with you.
Does he go out and look at the trees?
Yeah, yes, he goes in the field, he marks the trees, and if they are dead, he will not, you know, and say, no worries, just take it, um, you know, but yeah, so it's a, it's a joint.
So it's not a concern?
No, the dead trees are not, no, the dead trees are not.
So Beth, um, I did wanna mention that, um, Tony, we lost Tony a bit ago.
Okay, thank you.
I don't think he's been on for the discussion of.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and, and so when we get to, and just another example, and I've made a note for the Bolton, for us to check the Bolton bylaw. Um, but then where it says repair, maintenance, reconstruction, or any paving work done with respect to the scenic road, which now we know is then the twenty foot uh, right of way, um, including the construction of new alteration or existing driveways, which is why we're seeing, which was, which one was that, sixty-six Bayberry? Is that the one we have now?
No, um.
Just the one with the stone wall?
One way west of, but I'd rather that, that be discussed on the eighteen. I think that's what you're thinking of, the, the application I'm sending.
Okay, all right.
So that should be the six on the eighteen.
Okay, but that's an example of this bylaw, right?
It is an application that's been filed with the planning board, um, seeking a scenic roads approval. That is, uh, the public hearing's on the eighteen.
Okay, um.
Can I, um, so, basically, can I just, on the scenic roads we were talking about, the Bolton bylaw, let me give you a little history on that specific project, because the bylaw was so restrictive that where you would normally anticipate a driveway to a house could not be done. And the owner, if you, based on what they finally approved, the owner had to build this mirandering driveway that en- involved incredible excavation. So driving in his driveway is like driving into a canyon to protect these trees. And it seemed so irrational when the owner could have just had a direct driveway right to the street and not have the burden of that. Plus, all the disruption of the property on his side beyond the tree line that they were trying to save just seemed abhorrent, um. So I, I'm just telling you what we have to think about when these things come up.
You need a little bit of common sense, you can plant a new tree, you can, you know, you can say, you know, put down, plant another tree.
Right.
I was not looking at that as a recommendation. I've just, you mentioned it and I thought we should refer to it, that doesn't mean that we need to be, um, as bad as that, you know, that's.
No, no, I'm saying, what I'm saying is, I think having this in the bylaw is a good thing. However, I really wanted to evaluate what Bolton said, because I think the intent of the Bolton's bylaw was fine. However, this tree committee or whatever was involved with this, I think it was more of a political thing than really meeting the intent of the bylaw. Um, and I don't know how to address that kind of thing.
I don't think that's anywhere in here, there, this is fairly bare bones. There's not a lot of weight in this bylaw, you know, so it's set up to be very fair, very quick, very efficient.
Okay.
And Beth, we just amended it in twenty twenty-one, Carol was on board, I, Lori was on the board. And it recently went through town council review, um, so really, it's, it's pretty solid, and it's been working well.
Okay.
Um, and I, my recommendation would be is just to be, you know, we can always be better with communication with, um, highway, you know, I can always be, you know, we're gonna have some monthly meetings starting up in a couple of weeks where we'll bring the departments together and talk about projects. So if there's a highway or a driveway permit in front of the highway department, he'll, you know, he'll notify us, it'll induce that planning board needs to, to hear.
Well, I, I think the, the best way to address that and the topic I just brought up, we haven't had any problems with it, so why don't we leave it the way it is, right?
Well, yeah, yeah, it's been recently.
I mean, this planning board hasn't seen anything like that.
So my question, so my question actually was, or any paving work done with respect to scenic road, which is the first ten feet of everybody's driveway? Is that what the intent is? I'm, I, I had my driveway done two, two years ago.
Yeah.
I, I didn't come before planning.
But it says here, such work directly or indirectly affects stone walls or trees within the right of way, so. If you're just replacing a driveway and you're not affecting a stone wall or a tree, I guess it doesn't apply.
I don't have a problem with.
Which is the way I read it, it only applies if it affects a stone wall, which if you, it would only affect a stone wall or a tree if you gotta redo
I see.
do like a new driveway.
Like a new cut.
A new cut or something, so I think just repaving your broken up driveway shouldn't be a problem.
So let's talk about an example that might surface there. Supposing somebody's got property that has a stone wall, and they wanna change the driveway, in other words, relocate it.
Yeah.
So then we would probably say, well, you have to, whatever wall you take out here, you gotta put back where the old wall was, or something like that, is that?
Yeah, that sounds, yeah, that sounds.
In fact, you had a, an application that too long ago.
Yeah, I remember something, yeah, that they were gonna re- remove the stone wall, which.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And it worked well.
And I think down on North End Road, if I remember, they were putting in a house there and they relocated part of the stone wall, 'cause my daughter lives right near there, so.
Yeah.
And they did a nice job with the stone, um.
And I'm bored for those of you who haven't heard one yet, will usually, you know, let us for before and after photos, if the wall needs to be rebuilt, and it's been a very good, good relationship with everybody who's, um.
And at most, at least a lot of the walls in town you can't even see because they're so overgrown with brush, which is kind of a shame, but.
Yeah.
Now, that's a totally, Beth brought up a blight bylaw, you know any local towns that have one?
I don't, I don't, but I was talking with Janet in building department, you know, and we were just kinda playing around with that idea, you know, I, I don't know of any towns, but, do you, Robert?
I'm sorry, what was?
The blight bylaw?
I mean, you have to be careful.
Yeah, um, I, I would, if you wanna look at some communities that might have had them, um, would be maybe Sudbury?
Anything like that, pounds, you know, I mean,
um.
Like you said, you, you have to be careful of private individual rights, right?
Yeah.
Right, um, so the key there is to establish a criteria for what's obnoxious or repulsive versus what would be considered normal stuff. In other words, so somebody's got their trash barrels out in the yard, it's not gonna be a source of a complaint.
You don't wanna eat your way.
Right.
Yeah, but you have to remember, somebody trashes somebody else's treasure, so just because you think it's a blight.
That's right.
Well, that's, right, so that, that language would have to be carefully looked at, everything.
So, yeah, that's, you know.
Be better on a case by case basis.
Yeah, it depends, like you said.
Well, maybe the way to address that, rather than trying to put a quantity or anything like that, is if there are more than one complaint or three or four complaints or something, might be a way to handle a lot of these things, um, do you know what I mean? So without necessarily have a bylaw for every specific thing.
Yeah, because it is here, really, but, yeah, if you get multiple complaints, then that's probably a problem. If you get one complaint, it could be nothing more than animosity between me, you know?
Exactly.
Exactly.
But if you get multiple, multiple complaints, then.
So I, I think that in the bylaw in general, the building officials should have some latitude on that. And having language like the number or volume of complaints would be very important. So, um.
I feel like that could still be tricky, you could, if you're the upset neighbor, just organize, you know, your three friends to put in a complaint.
I mean, yeah, I mean, it's.
Depending on how committed.
I've seen that happen too.
And it does happen.
Sure.
Um, so, yeah, it, it is a tricky, tricky thing, you just watch some of those crumchards kill my neighbor. Basically starts off like that.
I know, that's not what we're here to discuss.
Yeah, right. So, if we go on to, um, the fees, does anybody else have anything to add to that, where we're, we just had already discussed eliminating any numbers and just referencing the fee schedule?
Right.
Yeah.
Nope, that's good.
Um, and then down at enforcement, I just had a note if we had any history.
Um, to my knowledge, um, is there a fee for enforcement? I think it's, uh, yeah.
Yeah, I think.
Not yet, um, not yet, I will say that.
Okay.
To my knowledge, and I'll double check with the building department on that.
Okay, so why don't we go on to the next page?
Can I just address the enforcement thing in general, not just on the specific bylaw?
Okay.
We have a lot of fees and fines for different kinds of violations. The problem we're finding is it's not being enforced because uh, the selectmen don't wanna pay for the legal costs to enforce it. Um, so that's a problem, so I, I, um, I don't know how to address it, but that's a real problem, and I get really upset when people have violated things and the. people have violated things and there's no enforcement and it's like a slap in the face to the people in town that requested this. Um, so I don't know what to say. Um, but the building official has the right to fine, but nobody executes on the fine. Um.
Well, they may want to look at, um, we did talk about that at some point where builders were not paying taxes on all of their properties. So it finally came to a point where we wouldn't issue any permits or, um, you know, subdivisions or anything without all their taxes being paid. If they owed any taxes to the town of towns and they couldn't get a permit.
Right.
So you might have something like kind of the same thing if, well, that would be a legal question too, I guess.
Well, my question is why can't they put a lien on the real estate?
Well, that was what I was just going to say. Exactly what I was just going to say is it's a legal question because violations, fines and violations don't have the same um superiority, uh, for a better word, I'm looking for another word, but I can't find it than real estate taxes do. Okay, so, um, that it's, that's a great idea. And I think that's something we should get a a legal, just put it on the list, Beth, to ask um, the attorney that there should be a way. Um, and that's really not from us per se, uh, cause that action happened through the assessors department, not the planning board. But through the assessors department in conjunction with the building department as far as, um, issuing building permits. No, no taxes can be owed by that person. Um, so anyway, so, so the next, um, page there, if you want to scroll down is I just added what I thought about the fees like today, but is that a separate committee that's doing that?
No, no, that, that's, um, open to, you know, the board's
Okay, so, um.
Felt comfortable with your changes, Lori?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, they're, they're not too exorbitant, but I think that what we're doing right now is way under. It, it does, doesn't make sense even just for the cost of, because basically what we try to cover and correct me if I'm wrong, is staff time. And the cost for staff time, that is not just the hourly wage of the person, but that is insurance, you know, benefits, whatever. The cost, the cost is much greater. Um, so, yeah, then when you go down to where that question mark is, I didn't.
Do we know your hours per project based on what?
We don't, we don't do hourly tracking.
No, but Andrew, listen to this. We have, I, I can tell you in the last year of staff time that was spent just on one project. And this is conservation, the building department, um, I'm not sure if it was the highway department, but as far as hours and hours and planning board on one project, and there is no way that whatever that person has paid is going to cover the staff time.
I, I believe that. I guess I was just wondering in my head, what would be, you know, the real, what would be the ideal cost? I don't think we should charge that because I think the point of kind of government is you differentiate some of it. But in my head, I was just curious, you know, is that a thousand or two thousand a permit, which would be a lot.
Well, you just think, I just think an applicant coming before this planning board, we get opinions from the police department, the fire department, the building department. All of those people have to put some time into responding. And then that, that is typing up something.
Sure, sure.
Get it to available to us. Um, and the reap, the cost for reproducing all this stuff is significant too. So I, you know, Laura's absolutely right. We've got to protect the taxpayer here a little bit.
So I, um, so I, I think I was pretty fair in everything that I did, but where I, and, and then of course wanted your input, but then there were ones that I really didn't know what to do with. And that starts with the, um, base administration fee, that one that was a thousand dollars. Um, it was, um,
A preliminary subdivision plan?
Site plan review?
Well, site plan review was one, I think I had a question for that whole list. No, it, it, that's why the question mark's at the top. It's really that whole page. Um, what would be realistic for us to do and not appear like we're gouging them? You know what I mean? That's not the point. The point isn't to gouge them. Um, but site plan review is one of them and that, yeah, that whole sheet. And then, oh yeah, why do I have that twice? Oh, I know why. Um, site plan review, and then after that, um, I, I actually for two, two pages in front of you. Um, you know, when you start a thousand dollars and I don't, I don't know. Anybody have anything to say on that? I just.
Well, I think, I think we have to focus some concerns on the magnitude of a specific project too. Um, so obviously if somebody's coming in with a huge project, um, the time involved to to process that and to monitor it and to have hearings on it. Um, so I'm looking on page four, we have site plan review. It just seems like we should add something for, I, we have to think of what, what kind of projects we'll be reviewing, right?
Well, some of them are store, are, yeah, well subdivisions or some of them are stormwater. The, the fee schedule has a, a multitude of different projects on it.
Right. So a subdivision would be, I would think far more intense than just the stormwater portion, you know?
Yeah, but we also have to remember that on a subdivision, they're also going to pay, and Beth feels free to interject, you know, here at any time. They're also going to pay per lot. And it just be per lot on top of the base fee.
Right.
So that, and I believe that's because, you know, you got to look at that too, you know?
Yeah. Carol, didn't you do a lot on this already?
Yeah, I was just, I was just looking at here.
Yeah.
Um, because I still have all the stuff from all the different towns.
Right.
And, and all the towns I had talked to, you know, some of them. Okay, which this one, this is Shirley. They have approval not required is a hundred dollars and then it's seventy five dollars per lot. And it's like preliminary subdivision application basic fee is six hundred dollars plus a hundred twenty five dollars per lot. And then you get down to the definitive subdivision application basic fee, that's twenty two hundred dollars or three hundred dollars per lot. Um, so, but then there's, you know, other towns. Um, this is Pepperell, they're fifteen hundred dollars application fee for a definitive subdivision plan plus three hundred dollars a lot.
Well, can I, can I intercept here?
Yeah.
Uh.
We're looking at the scenic roads.
We jump over the table.
Oh, we talked to the tables.
Right. So this fee schedule was under chapter 106.
No, we're done with 106. That was the only page I had on 106.
Oh.
We're into the fees.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm confused.
And then we're, then we're doing solar bylaw and, uh, definitive, definitive subdivision.
Over here with the fees.
Okay, but I thought we already did this once.
Yeah, we did.
We.
Yeah, you.
It was part of what we had in our packet last month at our last meeting. This was part of what.
So we were like, we're looking at the fees, I guess.
Yeah, we're looking at the fees and she's proposing some increases.
Which is fine.
Which, yeah, but you consider.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. Which is, I mean, the fees, I, I don't see a problem with what you have proposed.
I don't either.
Okay, so, so then, you know, what, to what you just said, as far as like the one that was fifteen hundred dollars for the site plan review. And then it had, then there's the other fees there. I don't know, maybe where it is a thousand on our, and again, question to you, what, what you want to do. But maybe where it is a thousand, we go to fifteen hundred. Maybe where it is six hundred, we go to seven fifty. And, um, there really shouldn't be anything ma- and I'd probably be contradicting myself, but I don't think there should be anything that is a hundred or two hundred dollars anymore. And there, there are some that are still there. So is there a, um, is there an agreement to have um, what the lowest fee is on the list? Versus we still have two hundred and two fifty on here. And are you guys still good with that? Or should we be at a minimum of three hundred?
Oh. I think three hundred is a minimum. Makes sense. I'm okay with that.
Yeah, you know what? I am too. As I look at this, so can you, so Beth, can you just make that as a change? It won't just be my changes, but any place that's under three hundred becomes three hundred?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, and the last.
Let me just ask you this though. So approval not required, right now you, you made it two hundred. But if you go to three hundred, then what does that do with the, um, the additional fees then? Cause then it says base administration fee plus two hundred and fifty dollars multiplied by the number of lots shown in plan. Or two hundred and fifty. So does that stay the same?
Um, Emma, if we're going to raise, I mean, again, up to the board, but if you're okay with raising that to a minimum, I'm okay with your additional charges. Okay, so we, we've, we've increased the base. And then if there's other charges, they can be what they.
What they are.
Yeah.
Okay, that works for me.
Have, everybody else good with that? And again, it can change yearly, you know, I mean, we see how it works kind of thing. But, um, yeah, it, it's just time to, uh.
My god, can you make those revisions and then at the December 18th meeting, you can review the table and approve it. Does that sound good?
Okay. And my question on that last page was where it says both major and minor, um, tell me again, are there any fees with a minor stormwater drain permit? Or are there no permits that are minor?
There are fees for minor. Um, there are, but that is not on the planning board fee schedule because that's saying, um, under the purview of the conservation agent.
Okay.
That's why it's not on.
Right. Can I, yeah, sure.
So that, that figure there has to change.
Okay.
Um, that, that, yeah, because this is a yearly fee that's on here and that probably should be the three hundred.
Oh, I, 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 am I on the right page there? The request?
Yeah, both major and minor on the top with the question mark. And that's, it says a hundred.
Um, a hundred dollars. Okay, so, pardon me if you. Yeah, I see what you're saying. Um, so the, yeah, so it's free. At the end of your construction phase, you come to the town and you ask for your certificate of completion.
Yeah.
While the permit is still, you know, valid.
Right.
If you don't, um, you're assessed, if you will, um, a charge every year beyond that expiration date. Um, and, and you would like to see that at three hundred from a hundred to three hundred?
I would.
Hmm, okay.
You meant page five?
Yeah.
Yeah, page five, we're talking about after a storm. Expired. And if you, if you ask for your certificate before the expiration date, it's free. And we process it like we're doing it off the 27 scales. But, um, if it's, um, you know, a year after, then you assess a fee.
Right. I would think that would require more time because you have to pull up all the old documents and review everything again, right? Yeah, so I think that should be three hundred too.
Three hundred.
And that may be a deterrent for them to do it on time.
Right.
Not let it go for a year or two.
Yeah, that's true. We try really hard to.
Maybe we should add it up.
Hey, good catch.
Okay, all right.
Good catch. All right. So my next part of 3.2 could be large scale ground mounted solar. Beth, I think the next.
Oh, down here? Yeah, all right.
Yeah, that's it. So again, these are all things that we had at the last meeting that we were gonna review and um, come up with. So what I found out was large scale means forty thousand square feet or more. Um, what I also found out.
Where'd that come from, Lori?
Oh, because it's in the definitions. Believe me, I know it myself. All these notes are because I, I, looking at this as a novice, let's say, and we're not supposed to be, we're, a planning board is now supposed to know everything about this. Um, I didn't know what large scale meant. Okay, so it's forty thousand square feet.
Or so they.
Or more. It must, it can only be thirty percent of a lot. And the largest bond can be sixteen acres. Um, I'm not sure. And where I have underlining, um, I think are more for people need to understand what the bylaw is and what it means and what they have to adhere to. Um, not that this has to continue being underlined. I'm just bringing it to your attention and hopefully when, um, Beth or whoever goes over this with, um, an applicant, let's say, these things are pointed out to them. Cause you know, you can lead a horse to water, but you can't make him drink, which means just because you give somebody a document, doesn't mean they read it. I almost feel like, I almost feel like, um, and I guess their application is a sign off of them saying, I have read all the documents involved and I understand them. Maybe an assumption, but, um, and also the, the, I thought this was interesting, as of right citing, um, shall the development may proceed without the. um, shall development may proceed without the need for a special permit, variance amendment, waiver, or other discretionary approval. As of right development shall be subject to a site plan review to determine performance with local zoning ordinances or bylaws. Projects cannot be prohibited, but can be reasonably regulated through planning board site plan special review. So, I don't know, is that ambiguous, or is it just me?
Now, that's exactly what was done at Lockbrook Solar Array. You were on the board at that time.
Yes, I was, yes, I was. Didn't mean I understood it.
So that was a site plan review, but it wasn't, it's not a special permit. It's considered a non-discretionary site plan review. And the board did, um, review that for, and made findings similar to what it would do for the special permit. It went through the same process. So that, that site plan is, is the same as a special permit, but it's just the board could not deny the project. The board approved the project with conditions and ongoing monitoring, and that's a great project. It's a great project.
And when was, when was this bylaw written?
This one here, it looks like 2017.
Yeah, 2017.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna make some general comments here. One, there's all kinds of technology changes that are happening here now. And there are also new energy types that are surfacing. Um, so, and then the solar collection farms are, are, are almost archaic now. Um, so I don't know quite how involved we should get with a lot of this stuff because, um, there's a lot, a lot of stuff that's been surfacing uh, from wind and solar. Uh, and the technology is changing directions rapidly. Um, so I, for example, they're making building materials now that are solar collector-type materials. And so this gets all over the place. Um, particularly what's happening in residential uses now, people putting them on their roofs. I've had some problems with surfacing with fire departments and, um, building codes and, um, and there's, uh, so I, I don't know. This might have been appropriate at the time. Um, I don't know how we can address this to.
Well, Robert, if I, can I draw your attention to something? Because, um, the first paragraph where it says the purpose, the last sentence, it's when a project is approved, they have to have, they have to prove to the town that they can decommission the project. So in other words, when it is, it's at its end of life or no longer useful, they have to remove it. They have to have the financial ability to remove it prior to they start the, prior to starting the project. So is that what you're meaning?
Um, well, not only that, um, I went through some of this in Hull, in the town of Hull, which was really one of the front-runners in wind energy. And, um, a lot of these projects are federally subsidized. And the subsidies only come from new technology, not to repair or maintain old technology. And so we end up with energy graveyards. Um, and the way the town of Hull addressed it when I was on that wind committee is we required a bond. Because a lot of these corporations go bankrupt. Um, so. Was there a bond in here?
Yeah, there is.
There is a bond.
There has to be. Yeah, it is, it is on here, and if you, if you go to the next page, okay, that, well, you can just, there, there is a bond reference here. Insur, it's called surety or bond. Um, but we can, we can get there if you just go back.
So there we are.
On the second page, yeah, you see my note on, so Fitchburg Road got, or got a zoning approval. They did not get a planning board approval. We heard about it.
Yeah.
But they never met with us, and it was constructed, and I, was that a by right?
No, that was prior to the bylaw, I believe, right? I have to research it, but I don't know the case, but, um.
Oh, yeah, it was before you, it was before you came, and so was 217.
Is that the one near the apartments?
Yeah.
Yeah.
2017, that was permitted.
So he just did, he just did the building inspector and zoning. He did not get a planning board approval.
Hmm.
Um, so you might, you might want to look up that too, so we understand it. Um, so that was that, that was that, that's two. Uh, did anybody see anything else on the first two pages there? It's mostly the definitions.
All right, yeah.
The next one is, uh, starts with zoning enforcement authority? Yeah. Okay, so again, there was just reference to the fee schedule. And then I found the minimum, there you'll see under B, the solar installation shall not cover more than 16 acres. Minimum for, minimum is, oh, why do I have minimum at the 40,000? A solar installation shall cover at most 30% of the lot, no matter how big the lot is. But the solar installations shall not cover more than 16 acres. That's huge. I don't even know. Oh, um, I didn't have anything else on, on that one. And then I didn't have anything on B or C.
And then if you want, um, if you're thinking of one.
Anybody have any comments? Because where I have all the checkmarks, they, I, I had no comments. Just again, that's our solar bylaw, and, um, I don't know how we would, or who we would find out from, um, that our solar bylaw needs updating. I mean, I.
In my time here, I think it worked really well. The one that was permitted during my tenure here has been phenomenal. Uh, there's been no issues. Uh, the permit holder has been very responsive, maintaining the vegetated buffer, the buffer.
Right.
The plantings, so, yeah, been doing well.
And how often are those, um, reports due?
Do, do you collect, as it says here, uh, monitoring reports? Uh, the annual report is submitted by the, yeah, the project manager. Um, we also get the monitoring reports for the vegetated buffers. Um, so, and, uh, I believe the annual report also has, yeah, it has the, um, financial and the, you know, the wattage that's provided. I think the board got one of those recently, so I'll have to check on that, but, yeah. So there's a lot of monitoring on the project. There's a lot of, it's a long process of permitting, but it works well, the way it's written.
I, I remember several site walks there. Um, going there, so. All right, so the next thing that I have that we were to review is definitive subdivision, 3.3. And, I don't know if you guys had any, um, remarks that you wanted to make. Um, all right, general process, number two. Um, I thought it would be good if, I mean, this says the board will review the plans for completeness within its ability. And since I've been on the board, it's the administrator that does the checklist. There's a checklist. It's, it's not the board, any of the board, that goes through the checklist. Um, so I thought it'd be a good idea if it was put as it was. And that is that, uh, staff reviews checklist before presenting it to the board. Rather than within its ability. It's not something that gets done. Uh, and then the emissions, and then, uh, once here, once the hearing is scheduled, the board will, uh, take responsibility for notifying the butters. No, the board does not do that. Um, so again, our, uh, staff administrator, or what is, what is your title with the town, Beth? I don't want to say it wrong.
Um, administrative assistant at a planning board and a ZDA.
Okay, well, um, why don't we just have that be administered, administrator to the board of, the planning board? Uh, will take the responsibility for notifying the butters and, um, the, you know, write something similar on the first line of number two.
Okay, one thing I would worry about is, um, if in fact, you know, the position were vacant, ultimately it could fall to the board sometimes. Like, I have been mentioned by myself before. If you have a vacant position, then ultimately it would be the board, you know what I mean? If you have no staff.
Yeah.
I'm not saying the board anyway.
That could be a crisis.
It could be.
It would be a crisis, not could be.
It's been done before. Sorry, when Lance, when I first started, Lance
Oh, yeah.
was in there writing decisions and getting me up and running, so.
So, um, why don't you have an or?
Okay, there we go, just in case.
Yeah, so there's your just in case. And then I had a question about, because I've not seen it in my tenure anyway, um, under five, that the public hearing, um, well, it can be two or three sessions, it could be more, um, sessions. Normally scheduled for one or two hours, I have never had a public hearing in the first or second or third session be two hours.
Yeah.
Normally it's 30 minutes. I can see how it can be 30 to 60 minutes. I can see it, it has gone 45 minutes, you know, for a public hearing. Um, but two hours is not, I don't, I guess I don't want, well, I don't know. What, what does everybody else think?
Do we even, do we need that sentence at all?
No, I think you can try it.
Okay, there you go. There you go. But the two or three sessions or more, um, is common.
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, they need to know that it's not going to be in one session or even two sessions. I can't remember.
Yeah.
I can't remember a vote after a second session, so.
Mm-hmm.
All right, and then everything else there looked okay on that. Uh, again, when I was going through this, it was more for, um, clarification. Uh, OSPD and OSMD, what does it stand for? And why isn't there, well, maybe it is somewhere, but I didn't see it in any of the papers, like, um, it written out, and then you know what it is in the rest of the document.
Oh, yeah, okay, so that's not in definitions. Um, it could be, yeah, it might be in definitions further. Um, because I only have this section. But it is the open space preservation development and the open space, where's the other one?
Um, the other one is OM.
Yeah, multifamily development. So those are two.
No, it's, no, it's also an open space thing. I just lost it. It's OSMD. What is, isn't OS open space?
Yeah, open space multifamily development, it's a special permit. Um, and they're both special. So you can apply for a definitive subdivision and a special permit. So if you are applying for both, one is dependent on the other.
Okay.
This is the way you design your subdivision will be dependent on, in terms of acreage and size of lots and number of units, um, on whether or not the planning board will grant the special permit.
Okay. Um, all right, I don't know where you are and where I am. I, I'm, I think I'm now on, am I on seven? Um.
Uh, section D. I think I'm missing a page here.
Definitive subdivision.
Yeah, there's a missing page here.
Okay, D? Are we at D?
D, on fees.
Yeah, D and, you know what it was? I had, I had this pile and I had to, I had to scan it all, and I couldn't scan it two-sided. So I was, I have some duplicates because of the back page kind of thing. So, okay, at D and, okay, as per fee schedule, okay? So no amounts in the document and as per fee schedule. Mentioned in 2010, which I don't remember. Um, okay, question was, uh, do we really do 15 copies?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear her.
She wanted to know if you really do 15 copies.
15 copies.
No, no, that's not necessary anymore. Everything is done electronically.
Okay, we want to change that then to what it is.
Okay, that's all right. Where is that under V2?
It is, uh, three.
E3, okay, yeah, okay. E3.
It's E3, but it's in two places. And, and then F1.
F1, okay.
And then, again, uh, do you think there needs to be a change? Please look at two and three, where it gives, um, all the submissions and the size of the submissions, is that correct? Do you, do you see what I mean?
Yeah, I think two is unnecessary, yeah. Um, you can have to delete that, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
If it's, if it doesn't apply, yes, definitely.
All righty, um.
And F3, is that the same thing?
Precise documents such as these may be for reduced size. I think that's also a delete, yeah, that's unnecessary.
Okay, and then, uh, the required 11 by 17. And then the required 11 by 17 photo reductions of plans. That's number four.
Those are pretty handy. Yeah, for board members if you go on a site walk.
Can I suggest? I was talking with Janet downstairs and the town clerk. And all these documents have to be filed in the vault and stuff. A lot of communities are doing everything in a digital format. So. When you do in a digital format like a PDF, then you can have any size that you want produced. I know the town doesn't have the funding to go into doing all this. But a lot of towns are moving in that direction right now. And even the building permit applications are all coming through websites and off online and downloading documents. So when I was with Janet down there, they, some lawyer wanted copies of some commercial development project. And so they had to go into the vault and find them. And then she had to get them reproduced. And I'm like, what's going on here? The the, uh, town tax office has a large print plotter. But the building department can't use it. And so I'm like, well, when my plotter retires, I'll give you that one. And I told them, the only way you can probably do it now is to take them to Staples and have them printed. So this whole thing is like just out of control and so, I don't know, I think somebody should talk to the selectmen here about, you know, getting more technology to do this stuff. Because it's costing us a lot of money in the long run. And the, the time consuming. And, you know, it's just the lawyer wanted six copies or some ridiculous thing. And it's freedom of information stuff. When she could have just sent them the PDF and go print your own, you know what I mean?
Now that is the case, that I think that Beth mentioned, now it is the case, most of what they get is in a is in a file, electronic file. Versus deleting some of this and she's going to fix the copy thing. She's going to, you know, amend whatever that 2 and 3 is and the 2 and 3 of F is going to be deleted. And then, so, so hopefully, I mean, I know you're talking about what was and I don't think that the town has allowed a budget for digitizing everything that's on file, which some of the towns have gone to. But then it's like, how far back do you go and you need to have the funds to do it?
Well, it's not only that, but I mean, starting now with the applications that would reduce a lot of this. And then as far as the zoning bylaw requirements, I mean, it is advantageous to have a hard copy of a site plan, for example, here. You know, D-size copy so you can really look at it and everybody can gather around their table and comment. But that, that should be the burden of the applicant.
Yeah, but that's the thing on the application, some of the forms now is the PDF. Didn't we put that on the?
Yeah, we reduced that and have it the PDF requirement.
When I read, we, I redid some of the forms and added PDF references.
Do that?
Yeah. I helped us out and put some.
Alright.
Tied up some forms. Tied up some forms in the PDF or stuff over there, whatever.
Basically, yeah, was for sending it around to departments. So the building inspector could look at the plan and make his referral. And now that's done electronically. So we're all, you know, we're all learning how to read plans electronically and.
So any place that you see then, if we missed it today for reference, that's to be changed to electronic. And then my next comment, basically because I had been reading a lot in these documents was I have, why is this repeated so many times regarding the storm water management application? Yeah, apparently I, I saw it enough times to write that. Just making that note, you might check if it's actually supposed to be everywhere that I'm thinking it is. Then also here we have another acronym with the NPDES.
Oh, seven or five, it's the same one, she's got the, for compliance.
Where I had the little note there. It has the other acronym.
For compliance with NPDES, phase 2 stormwater management.
Yes, number 5.
Oh, okay, so I.
Second sentence in number 5.
Do you know what NPDES is?
Yeah, that's the national pollution discharge. What's ES? That should be spelled out, but yeah, national pollution discharge.
Okay, that should be somewhere, you know? Not, not just the.
Oh, so it's actually, I hear what you're saying. It's under required submissions, number 5. And then it's again, under fees, right? No, 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 no.
What, what are you, what are you looking for? We were talking about the acronyms.
Oh, okay, I, I was back to the storm water management application. I think you have, you have repeated two pages, that's why you saw it twice. But NFTs is, again, it's the national pollution discharge and I don't know what ES means, but I can look it up.
Okay.
I can, I can spell that out.
If somebody asked me as a planning board member, I would be able to answer that question. You know what I mean?
I'd have to Google it.
You might get. Hit on that one acronym. I work for the town, I don't know how many times. The same acronym is used. Somebody's going to mean something different depending on the program.
Exactly, yeah. Why doesn't it just say what it is?
The next page I have, hopefully I have it right. The next page I have starts with newspaper published on top. Or is it number 7? What is the? Is the? Yeah, that's the last part, okay, so the next, next page starts with 6. Alright, I found a 6. Again, cross out any dollar amounts and somehow do fee schedule. And then, so I underlined ways, town of ways within a subdivision. Do you know why they call it ways instead of roads?
Yeah. You know what, I read, I, I can't remember why, but I read something that said why it's called a way instead of a road. But I can't remember where I read it. There was a reason why they call it ways instead of a road.
Probably has to do with ownership.
Well, um.
Like a right of way, for example?
No, it was.
Then it should say right of ways.
No, it wasn't, it wasn't right of way.
It's a subdivision, okay?
I was reading something and it said why something was called a way instead of a road.
Approval of definitive plan does not constitute the laying out or acceptance, okay, by the town of ways within the subdivision, nor does it imply any obligation. It's like Timberly Park or any other subdivision where for sometimes, sometimes a year, two or three before it's accepted, it's at an annual town meeting for the roads to be accepted. Even if they're servicing the roads. They do so even though the roads have not been accepted. So I don't know, if you, if you can easily find out, I don't know, just.
That H, H8, right?
8.
That was 8. And then and I don't know if anybody else has anything, for some reason I had a question mark next to I3. The board may require that such maintenance be guaranteed through a deposit of money. Such deposit will only be released upon acceptance of the corresponding ways. Usually there's a bond in a subdivision for their roads. So again, there's the ways and, and as town ways will only be released upon acceptance of the corresponding ways as town ways. So it isn't just a subdivision.
I, for some reason, I think that's a legal term instead of, or instead of using roads and highways. For some reason, I think it has to do with a legal term because they go back to the old English ways.
I don't, I don't know.
I don't know, it makes more sense.
I mean, this is a change. Yeah, 10 years ago, they changed this, so. See, and like in the next sentence, you'll see the project shall adhere to the submitted O and M and they've spelled out operation and maintenance plan. So that's, that's how I think it should be, at least in one place and whatever it is, that it says what the acronyms are. And I didn't, I didn't, nothing else on that page hit me in any manner.
Would you like, would you like me to ask town council how to reword number 3? Perhaps and update it? I could ask him in like a, a session, he just comes to town hall and.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, it isn't just number 3, it'll be that number 8 as well. Any place where ways is used, that basically refers to a road, obviously, or passover, whatever, I don't know. Yeah, just put that down as a note. And so the next one. Next page?
I think the last page is a duplicate.
Okay, that looks like a duplicate. Oh, don't tell me you don't have it. Okay, what's the next one? Just did that, so there's two of those.
Okay.
That's the double one.
Okay, and that's the end.
That's the end?
That's the end of what? Yeah, you're done.
Oh, well, I have, if you have your packets from last month, the next one should have been.
Is it status reports?
Well, actually, there's two. How did that happen? Did we go through number 7? Let me go back, I might have this twice. If I do have another. Thinking that there may be two pages that you don't have. Yeah, and I put this one in twice. Oh, God, this wasn't really fun. Did that. So there is a number 7 after number 6 and let's see, there's only. Well, that's where the NPDES was again. And it's under, and this will be, it's under C, damn it. CB. You have, you have mine, but you have
I can pull up.
The first packet that you gave. So there's number 7 where I have a question. The board will normally vote on a penultimate draft. And my question is, why do we have to have a word that somebody has to look up?
Okay. Oh, I know what you're saying, alright, now we're.
Then you can just say its meaning, which is, will vote on, the board will normally vote on a next to the last draft. Which is what they, oh, you're not in the right document.
I think it's a page after that, Beth.
I'm sorry, what?
Is there another page after that one? Because that's H, right?
Where section issue is, does anybody know?
I don't know, I know it's in there somewhere, though. I think it's in there somewhere.
Oh, it's B7.
B7?
B7. Yeah, 175-13, B7.
Is this the one where it says the board will normally vote on a pen, pen, penultimate?
Yes, that's it.
I can't even say the word.
That's right, neither could I.
Penultimate draft.
What?
Right there, how you say that?
I never even saw that.
I don't even know what it means.
It means, it means next to the last.
Draft, make any.
There it is, Beth, you've got it. Numbers, you, you just passed it.
Got it.
Yeah, you got it.
So this is the word.
That word means next to the last.
Okay. Final revision?
The board will normally vote on a next to the last draft making any necessary. You know, I hate to talk down to people. And, and when you use words that not everybody knows, English is preferred. Okay, so there's that. And this is, and when I say you, I don't mean you.
No, we know.
I don't mean you personally.
You're naming you.
The town, no, the town is giving this as a document and everybody's supposed to be able to read it. Okay. The butters will receive either a, okay, I had a question mark under the last sentence there because I do not know this to be true. That the butters will receive either a summary or complete copies depending on the circumstances. Of the decision. So Beth, what is the actual process after there's a decision made?
The butters receive a notice of decision. And they're instructed, yeah, so if they want to see the document, complete document, they can go to the town clerk.
Okay, so that sentence should say that.
Okay, yeah. Receive a notice of decision or actually it may not be called a notice of decision because it's a definitive subdivision approval. I'll just put, yeah, I'll make a note. Okay, very good.
Okay, then going further down that one, in the absence of no, I wasn't sure about this. In the absence of an existing stormwater permit for a project, a stormwater management application and all associated documents shall be filed in conjunction with a definitive application and the decision shall be conditioned upon the issuance. and the decision shall be conditioned upon the issuance of a stormwater permit." And, this appears a lot in the subdivision requirements. And does that mean that every subdivision or new project has to have a stormwater?
No, because there is a threshold. You know, there is a threshold on what triggers the stormwater management permit. So, it's typically filed to the land use coordinator to make the determination.
Right. And that just happened. Such that the board knows that. That just happened. Last year, right?
How it works, but this is rooting a bit much, yeah. I don't like this rooting either.
Okay, so, maybe that should be clarified?
Can you just get rid of the word existing?
Existing, yeah.
Oh, okay. In the absence of a stormwater permit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For the project.
That makes, yeah, I think that's getting rid of that word, it's a good thing.
And then you should put, if the threshold is triggered and somehow right here, you know what I mean?
Yeah, because, yeah, I agree with that. If the threshold-
Filings to be made if they're not, you know, necessary.
Right, so, yeah. So-
All right, I'll make a note on that as well.
And then, do you put a note that, who did, that the conservation, is the conservation agent, or?
Land use coordinator will, will evaluate and make a determination.
Oh, land use coordinator. Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
That trigger should be somewhere. And then, that, so that B has that NPDES in it. We already said that.
Yeah, that's National Pollution Discharge Elimination System. I'll make sure.
It's a mouthful. So then, on number 7, and I had a question on this, so I'll state it. And if somebody else has something else they want to bring up, please let me know. "Unless otherwise indicated in writing as part of the application, the act of submitting an application shall constitute an act of intent," oh, yeah. "to abandon any existing use of the property. Such abandonment shall be effective no later than the date of the application." Are you serious? Not yet, but I mean-
It's number 7.
It's number 7. And I have a question, and my sheet has a question mark with an example. Because, why, if there was any chance that somebody would be denied their application to do something with their property and they lose, they lose the current right as soon as they make the application and then they're denied, but they've lost the current use? How does that make sense? Who, who would do that?
No.
All right. Yeah.
So now you know I've read the document.
Oh, yeah. Good work. All right, so that was C. C17. And I, again, I can go meet with town council and bring all of these up. You know, just give us input, yeah.
Yep. Okay, so, did I, okay, I've got one more reason here, but I don't know if I've already done this or not. Since we've gone through everything that you already have. Status reports. I haven't, which was, did we do this already, L?
No.
Okay, status reports. Number 2 is a question that I have. "The Board Requires Quarterly," oh, yeah. Okay, I'm reminding myself as I read it. "The Board Requires Quarterly Financial Statements Including Copies Of Receipts And Possibly Cancelled Checks, Et Cetera. The Purpose Of This Information Is To Validate And Update The Existing Information Concerning Anticipated Construction Costs As Well As Identify Unforeseen Risks. The Board May Require An Increase In The Performance Guarantee," or warranty, however you want to say it, "Amount To Other Such Adjustments Based On Such Feedback. Decreases On This Basis Will Normally Not Be Allowed Unless It Can Be Shown That Lower Than Anticipated Discrepancies In These Amounts From The Amounts Submitted In The Plans Either In The Cost Or Quantities And Deliberate Errors Or Omissions In The Financial Statements Are Grounds For Rescinding The Subdivision Approval."
Oh, wow.
When was that ever? Ever? And what kind of staff time would that take? Something like that. So, to me, that was, again, another big question. Because they're talking about, from the federal down to the state level, not so much locally, but here we are, about making it less cumbersome for development to occur. And this would be time-consuming and, and cost prohibitive, I think, both on the town, on the side of the applicant as well as the town.
I agree. Why is it in there?
Well, don't ask me.
Well, then, that's a good reputation.
Yeah. So, I think that, I think that takes care of everything that we had at our last meeting. And that was the scenic road sheet, the fee schedule, and so 3.1 and 3.2. So, I guess, we, I guess we won't assign anything for the 18th because we have a pretty full meeting. But we'll review in the meantime, the fee schedule, whatever Beth can give us as feedback for the work done today.
Okay.
Is that good? Okay. So our next meeting is on December 18th at 6:30. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn at 8:52?
I'll make a motion to adjourn at 8:52.
Seconded?
Okay, pro call vote, please.
Robert Theryn? Yes, adjourn.
Sarah Hoppsis, yes.
Andrew Shepard, yes.
And Laura Schiffin, yes. Thank you all very much.